That's.
I know, I talked to Joel and he said I need to break out.
I find it to be the flag of the United States of America and to the others for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Call meeting in order. Uh, we do have a, we do have a forum, I think we're watching approved the agenda in a minute.
So.
A second.
I'll second it.
All favor I?
Alright, bye.
Bye. Both? Alright. I don't have an engineer today.
He was gonna be on.
Oh, that's right, he's got that.
Oh, yeah, they're judging.
Yeah, you can engineering them. Uh, drainage.
Yes, claims.
Claims and stamp warrants, I see.
Yep.
How many can most approve the claims and stamp warrants?
Alright, so when we're in the second, any discussion? There are no favor I?
Bye.
Bye, both? Pass. Uh, Thursday work order coming through?
Yes, Mike Ferguson, it is. Uh, Scram Farm. So it's for DD ten last six.
Brand new, we're not knocking off. Um, there's some erosion, yeah, erosion around the big plate.
Yeah, it's where the farm drive goes over, so he said then basically something broke down.
The bank is. Think it's giving away around the pipe, so. And he's gonna contact somebody. Yeah, okay. Uh, what is it, project? Well. It's the bay.
It's. It's like a farm drive. I sent a picture of it, I zoomed in so you can see.
It's, it's eroding right around here.
Okay.
And because of this. Lateral comes through here, this lateral comes through here, so there is a crossing there, but this lateral comes through.
Yep.
And there's eroding around that.
So it's not their access.
No, it's either way, it's just.
Yeah.
But that it don't send the river, not a private drive.
No, it's.
No, it's.
And if that's what you're.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, all the trip was, if it's a crossing, then we wouldn't take care of it, so.
Right.
But if, I mean, pipe of water was rusting down, it's, it looks like it's eroding the bank.
It's just, yeah, there's, that's something given away where water's getting in there now and just started to do that. Cut away at the bank, so.
Yeah, so, through the work order.
Alright, there's motions or second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? There are none, all favor I?
Bye.
Bye, both? Any else, Val?
Do you get clarification from Ruggnus on that one the other week?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um. Get up with what we make down there.
Yep.
In Des Moines, Thursday. So, it sounds like, uh, five hundred just going fourteen and thirty-four. Yeah. On the mid portion, so. Hopefully, yeah, and you might, I don't know if I feel many calls. On that or not, but it sounds like there's been a lot of interest from the locals. Uh, local contractors, so.
Maybe have to extend it in the next winter because some of the guys already booked up, but they still wanna bid on it.
They wanna, yeah, possible extension. Completion.
Which is fine, I think.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Depends on all the bids. Well, depends on all the bids coming, yeah, exactly.
Well, and then too, it's, if it does get that far out, there's no doubt about it either, so.
Yes.
It gets in after next fall, so.
Right.
Then we'll get a wet fall, melt a few water instead of right now.
Start getting wet in the spring.
I think fourteen there and be a water.
Yeah.
Um, they would do.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of dial, right, water.
That's right.
Alright, that anything else for Val? Thank you. Regular claims, you guys looking over?
Yeah.
More different claims.
Alright, your second, I'll second it. Any discussion on? There are none, all favor I? Bye, I, I, both? Alright, here. Uh, he reports?
Nope.
He reports. Elegibility or salary thing is?
Nope.
Liquor light.
Yep. He fired theirs again.
Wood?
Good for little stack, hey?
Want to approve liquor license?
Alright, want to approve both liquor license?
Yep.
Yeah. Second that more. Alright, any discussion? There are none, all favor I? Alright, both? Welcome, Gary. Alright, the resolution to approve dispersal funds and directly planned. Let's definitely look at that last, Gary, sent to us? You've got a question?
Okay.
Yes.
I think it was too bad.
Oh, no, what a bigger side.
Yeah.
Because the four city and Lake Mills. And Winnebago County all working together, their funds are all.
Gold.
I don't know, counties pays funds for this and of course, any ambulance base for that, but.
Well, I have no idea.
I know, so, we're trying to figure out.
So. Yeah, I know, I just think of that, so, I mean, it was little Bay County asking for forty thousand. Right?
Well, it was.
Or no, four city, excuse me, so, could we? Could we do forty thousand to four city ambulance service, forty thousand county, which would cover the north, northern part, but we were doing eighty thousand, right?
Yes.
Is what does, what does Winnebago County cover? Cause they haven't been asking for anything.
Well, see there, so their tax.
Lake Mills would be the one that would cover the rest of the townships over there. There would be nobody else.
So what is, so should we go to Lake Mills instead of?
Well, I don't know if they do their own, I don't know how with what, what they're doing.
We have Buffalo Center ambulance service too.
Right.
But they don't service.
They don't service us, but they could.
Or what about Emmens?
Emmens don't have an ambulance, they only have a rescue.
Don't need that ambulance.
So, I mean, our question is where's the money go because?
Mm-hmm.
Winnebago County is paying wages, I believe. For them, and something else is what their money is allotted for. And.
I might talk to Terry Derby on Friday. The way they've got it set up is the four city ambulance. Provides EMTs for the Lake Mills ambulance to keep their service going.
Right.
Fair bet, so, that's when he told me, he said, really, you should make the check out, the four city EMS. But you're, or amp, but you're telling me now, you gotta call in somebody else that's.
Well, no, no, think of it as, if you were, were given eighty thousand to four city, are they getting it back to the Lake Mills ambulance?
They're providing an EMT for them to keep their business going.
We don't, I mean, yeah.
So they're the employer of record?
That's a good question.
The one I haven't asked yet, maybe we should hang tight, look into it.
Yeah.
You want me to look into this more?
If you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
Four city billing back to Lake Mills, so.
No.
No.
I don't know, yeah.
Four city is actually billing, uh, wants to bill, uh, for county.
But the ones they cover, but the Lake Mills ambulance service, are they billing up to the ones Lake Mills ambulance service covered?
According to Joe, what he told me four months ago, is basically the forty thousand that they've asked for was to cover the. Wages for the paramedics to come into Worth County.
There has been nothing before because.
There hasn't been anything before, he says that's basically what you're paying for, you're not paying for the ambulance, you're paying for the paramedics to come in. I should have called Joe too. Let's talk to Terry on it. And went with what he told me, and I guess I will make some more phone calls before we do this. You know, we ran into this.
Well, we just. This, I don't care how it works, we just wanna make sure that.
Right.
Well, and I'm not writing the check tomorrow anyway, cause I'm gonna do a budget amendment.
Right, no, that's, that's not that we thought we have time because our budget amendment is gonna come through.
But before we pass the resolution, let's get it right.
Yeah, that is two different vehicles, cause a paramedic comes in on their fast response vehicle, and then the ambulance.
Whatever, you're a state. That same way.
Certainly don't.
Can be, can be the same way with four cities.
Four city or Lake.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the way it's gotta explained to me after Winnebago decided to do this, was four city EMS. Was providing EMTs to Lake Mills to keep their service going, which comes out of that whole Winnebago fund.
For them, yeah.
Would that be the jump vehicle? Probably.
Yeah, and then I'm sure they respond, they respond out with Lake.
Yeah, all the time. So, that's, if you wanna check into that just a little more, make sure.
We don't wanna aggravate anybody.
We wanna make sure that Lake Mills, we're concerned, you're getting a total of eighty thousand dollars, you guys do what you want with it.
Right.
Maybe.
We wanna make sure Lake Mills is happy.
I mean, I would hope for coming away. If they passed, they would be working together somewhere or another.
Probably, so, but it sounds like it's more confusing than the.
Well, I think it's still trouble.
Right.
There's still some confusion.
So, yeah, I'll get back to you.
A lot of stuff where.
Oh, yeah, fortunately, well, a lot of people got mad after they both.
Yeah, it's, keep that one on for next week and see if we can.
Hit the iron yellow.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's gonna go, you know, once we get the budget amendment all done, but. What you gotta. Be sure it's going to the proper place, so.
But you're thinking maybe break it up forty forty?
Well, if necessary, if not, I don't care, it can go, as long as it gets, as long as, yeah.
Sixty twenty?
As long as.
Whatever, they, let them make the call.
Right. Just as long as it doesn't affect, and it's not gonna affect the servants in that, okay, but I mean, it is Silver Lake and Bristol too, on top of that, which is not basically most times served by four city other than their paramedics, so.
Right.
Just saying.
But that EMT in that vehicle coming out of. Lake Mills. Into the Bristol Silver Lake area, probably gonna beat the ambulance there. And that's what they're providing an EMT for, the way I understand it.
Yes, and that's why, no, I got no problem with all of them, of course, they just wanna make sure they get.
Yeah, we do not wanna leave Lake Mills out.
Lake Mills gets something, whether it's whatever they have in there.
Whether they.
That's fine.
Or whether four city works with them, or we split it up, alright, alright, I'll find out.
Yeah, I'll just pull that one off for a week and see if we can get it figured out. Uh, new board appointments, I'm gonna domain owner operator of egg, of property. Am I know anybody? Was, was there an area this one was from that we need to focus on that area?
Paul, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Paul, so, I don't know.
I don't know if we have the whole county covered or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if Andy would wanna do it, Andy lives in, recall, Paul moved to Raceway, so, on the other side of the border.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. They have quite swap houses, but yeah, they bought a house up there, and Andy lives on the farm.
Andy.
His son.
It's on Andy's.
Yeah. So, I'll get hold of, I don't have Andy's number. Paul Ball. I can see if I can, he'd be interested. It's not a huge job, but.
Yeah, right.
I mean, somebody young.
Just name on the list, we gotta have it.
Okay, see. I have to hold an idiot. And there's Charlie too, Charlie on.
Oh, he's already a trustee.
He's a trustee, so we can really get him in the political world.
But did he, did he, uh?
Charlie?
Yeah.
Well, Doug moved to town, Lake Mills.
Oh.
Yeah, they all moved out of the county.
Charlie's living out there?
Yes, always on the farm.
He started something.
I didn't move, or Ernie did, I haven't moved yet. No, I stayed in the county.
Oh, yeah.
I think Paul moved.
Yeah.
Who else was ready to move out of the camp?
I'm sure we got most county covered.
Yeah.
Last I looked, I thought we had pretty much representation from every area, cause there's, which is what, ten different farmers, each ten does the farmer's. So. Yeah, I guess you wanna reach out to them or?
I could try, I know I could try, I'll see if I can get Andy's.
We need four horses and Linda. A little more volunteer time, which hopefully we never have to use.
Yeah.
Well, pipeline comes soon.
Well, would be.
Maybe just use it six years ago.
Yeah, you did.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what was for.
Then power lines.
Oh.
Seal.
Yep.
Alright, well, I guess we'll keep working on that. Jake Hansen, potential hire request. What do you got going, Jake?
Well, we're in the process. Just so we get, uh, some good candidates. We'll be, I make an announcements here by Wednesday, I think, this week. My confusion was just the, am I, am I able to go ahead and hire someone? But I'm just gonna go, I don't know if wanna go off procedures or not, but I think making, basically, we made a motion. You know, it's all, there's never been a policy, so. Making a new policy or a new motion would probably not affect the ones that had it to me in, in the process, and maybe the motion should have been a little bit different, but, uh. You know, I just, I wanna make it clear, we don't have a budget, so when you hire somebody today, or if you were hiring somebody today, doesn't mean that person's gonna get funded.
Okay.
Cause we don't know, till we pass that budget. So, you know, maybe the motion should have been that we don't hire anybody. During the budget process until we approve that budget, you know, but, because. You could project it, but if we can't find that money, it's not gonna, you know, it's not there, but I think we're okay, it's not the point, and I understand you gotta, we've got some vacancies that we've been. Tried, well, not used so much, but yours is probably gonna feel pretty easy, yours is still. You know, a process, so. We've been doing that for about six months. So, yeah.
I guess my question on it is. Do you, if, if, if you decide to add a new position or you do a rehire? Do you proceed to go out and look for the candidate, put it all together, and then come to the board to get approval, or do you come to the board first before you even go looking? And wasting your time on all these interviews and everything else, when we're going, and then. Which way is this gonna work? You guys gonna do it first, then get approval, or we're gonna give you approval, and then you proceed to go and look?
So I guess the justice should have been that you need to get approval to. Rehire or hire a new person before you actually put it out there, I mean, at, at.
That's why.
Exact same time that we make that decision, it's gonna be public anyway.
Because if we kill it, you just did all that work for nothing.
Yeah, we could be, we could be struggling through the year and just say, you know, we need to take a step back, see if you can get by a couple, three months, budgets coming up, let's talk about it then, you know, I mean, depends on when a person comes and goes, I mean, that's. We never know, but I think it is important that, not necessarily we have. Control over it, but we have discussion over it, and we haven't done that in the past, usually it comes across, you know, and we know it's coming, but that's not the point, I think it's just better to have some discussion and.
Well.
And some facts, I mean, what's going on.
And it isn't just during the budget time either, with this deal down the state. We need to look at this until we figure out where they're at, which is maybe a year or two, we might have to do this for.
Well, and rehire is a little bit different than new hire.
That would be correct.
You're adding a new position.
It is, but it still. We're always prediction budget to your head, how do we know that we can fund that first?
Hey, guys, I'm gonna recess the meeting for a minute. Found out some news today. Not sure what's going on, Brett, what do you know?
Oh, jeez.
My goodness.
You know, this is reported, right? You guys are odd guys.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Just a kid.
Well, I'm only fifty once.
That's not again, huh? Yeah.
Thanks for embarrassing me.
That's my job, but. I worked it out with AJ.
Okay.
I, yeah, I didn't have to go work that early, but I actually got it all.
Some of my issues.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
I, yeah.
So now you gotta keep.
Yeah, I guess so.
Alright.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank Brett.
Your Brett.
Jesus, important milestone, you didn't know this.
Okay, I don't think anybody wants to admit that.
No.
She's been so far. Didn't want it to slip up.
Yeah.
He did this to me when he got engaged too. He did it in public at the bank.
Such a romantic.
Yeah, I guess he's a keeper.
Well, I'm taking my foot off it.
You better. We, we passed.
Yeah, just. Again.
Yeah, I'm doing it till we're down, I, they can help themselves.
Okay, I will reconvene the meeting then. Happy birthday, Jackie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um. So as far as, as that goes, I, you know, when we approve that budget too, that employees own that budget, whether we approve the next budget with that employee in it, that's the question too.
But it's a good time to have the discussion.
Yes.
It, it's not that we're gonna say no to everything, that's not the point, I think it's just to be, have the open discussion, you know. We don't know a hundred percent, even when we sit on a board, what's going on in those offices and what the needs are, sometimes it's tough. Cause we got so many other things. It does, when you present facts like you did. I was glad to see that, so.
I'm just. Just a little to go on about too, um, you know, I said the future projections and stuff, where, um, all of our bills. Uh, made it through that first one whole session, they're sitting in ways and means right now.
That's cool.
Um, the non-resident one is the one that I said, um. That if they want to find ground around here, they'll start to be able to register their vehicles in Iowa, so they'll pick up that, that, I mean, that one actually passed, um. Both the House and the Senate, and so that's being renumbered and. And they will then produce some.
Good, they're usually yanking stuff away from us anymore, not giving them.
Well, this is, it's. This is like that, like it's staying, they're gonna try and supplement the tax dollars with fees, if you got.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean. It's moving in the right direction.
I think so. I do.
I do too.
Yes.
There's potential there.
Right, it's, it's fine, it's finally, people have been, the wheels have been squeaky long enough.
Nineteen eighty-one, we said was the last time that the fees and you carry about this area.
Man, it's a fee that I only pay every X amount of years.
Plus, it's a fee you only pay if you.
Buy.
Vehicle, alright.
So, otherwise you're paying it every year, even if the money in the amount.
Yeah.
You know?
This is a way to accept that.
Yeah. Well.
Well, and. Since there's never been a policy, they had started this process.
Yep, that's what.
And I understand that it's, his office is kind of a critical.
They have the most fun for.
Right, there, there's the biggest, we gotta have, have it there, and I know. Um, you know, Kim retired, uh, stepping there, and then, and. Really be shorthanded, so.
Yes.
Um, I, I would think that. I would think we'd have to get somebody to re-replace, replace in that office.
Do you have any other facts and figures above what you already presented us, you just?
That's it, other, like I said, there, uh, most projected numbers didn't include. The, like, some of these, the potential stuff, I'd have to see a couple of years of it, the cross town.
Right.
How that'll affect us, if, you know. They said, being right there on the interstate and right on the border is, is a handy deal.
Today. Well, that kinda stuff, I appreciate, yeah, because I appreciate you, you know, sorry for the confusion and stuff, I think it's something important that we do.
Right.
And sorry if I was confused, I just wanted everybody to sing.
You need. I'm gonna tell you, I knew for sure, we're, we're experienced.
Yeah, so right now, when they rehire. Hire a new position, they come to us first.
Either way, yeah, either way, I mean, like I say. We meet every Monday, so I mean, usually no, usually you have two week notice, I hope.
Yep.
You know, so you got time instantly to be on, done by Monday, unless they put on Friday, but, you know.
Yep, that was a confusion.
And they can't get paid until we see apparel eligibility form either.
Yeah, right, yep.
And it can't, it shouldn't be backdated or anything like that, it should be, they should be paid that day or after that day. So Elizabeth stays happy with us.
Well, and if it's do or die, we can set up a special meeting. Before you, or notice, we can do it by Zoom if we have to.
Yeah.
We can work it out, if it's an emergency hire to get, you know, for some reason, but. Just no reason can't work it out, but anyway. So I guess Jesse probably.
Yeah, so I would say. I guess we in agreeance?
Yeah.
Interview, we think that position probably should be filled.
I thought we just probably make a last, I'll make a motion to Jake, go ahead and replace a new employee.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Yeah, any other discussion, huh? There are none, all favor I?
Alright, I.
Both? Yeah. It'll be a hundred percent official when you bring us payroll eligibility.
There it goes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks.
Jesse. What are you here for?
Uh, we did receive an application for our R N opening, um. You would like to move forward with this individual, um, it would be a part-time position instead of full-time, so we're opening at like twenty-four hours a week. Here to ask them to be able to move forward.
Yeah, you saw some figures too.
Yeah.
They look over.
Yeah.
And I, I, I guess my personal feeling is maybe that's a good direction to go, if I do sit on the board, and we still have to make final approval of the board, which I think is fine. And you always discuss the hires with us anyway, which is great, that could be a board policy we might wanna pursue too, just to have it as a matter of record, um. And all the outside boards should probably look at that, I think, just to make it part of the procedure.
Right, well. For the next three, four years. It's, we have to go this route.
Yeah.
Because it's things that changed in an entirely new path, so, we, we have to go this route so we can maintain that.
If it comes down to budgets, we're, are you looking at the budget for just hiring, or are you looking at department's overall budget, you know, in order to?
Their bottom line.
Our bottom, our bottom line, necessarily, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we're looking over everything, I think.
Yeah.
We are, but we are bottom line, so.
Well, I was asked, I guess trying to refer to it, if we have to. As you look forward down the road, you know, even if, like I said, it's next year, if we have to look at trying to. Got something out of our budget, or get our budget down lower in order to keep that person on.
Mm-hmm.
Then.
That's.
It's, it's, and it's gonna be on, on public health and the public health board to keep that bottom line where we need to keep it. And if you wanna, if you need to keep the employees, you may need to trim somewhere else to keep that bottom line member.
And it's during the year.
Well, it's, so we gotta. It's a different situation than it's been in the past, and so we gotta be.
Well, it should.
As a board.
Yeah.
To look further ahead during this, this year.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
I like the fact that you're going from a full-time to a part-time to fill that niche in there when you didn't meet full-time. Uh. Because you're not gonna pick up holidays, vacation, you're gonna pay health and all this kind of stuff. The thing that I still have a problem with, cause I'm against this, so. Is the fact of exactly what I talked to you in the budget meeting about. Because you're going from twenty-eight dollars to thirty dollars on this R N. It triggers, is this gonna trigger the other three R Ns for two dollars an hour? So we're looking at, with the other three R Ns on a two thousand eighty-hour yearly work schedule. We're looking at four thousand one hundred sixty dollars over twelve thousand dollars added on to this one's wages over here. Which makes her awfully costly per hour. And that's the part, I understand the fact of, we got an R N that came in a year ago at twenty-eight dollars. And with last year's six percent, she's not at thirty, so now we hire one at thirty, that's not fair to that R N. My problem. Is we're going from full-time status to part-time status, that part-timer doesn't get near the benefits of that full-timer. And I don't believe that the part-timer coming in at thirty should trigger the other three. To cost us another almost twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Good.
Because you gotta add that twelve thousand five hundred dollars to her total for the year, which was thirty-seven, four forty. That gets to be expensive when you figure it out at twenty-four hours a week.
Eventually.
That was my problem with this whole thing, so yeah, that's what I don't like about the whole picture. If we were comparing apple to apples, full-time to full-time, I'd have to sit back and go, okay, I agree with you. I may still not wanna do it, because not only we're getting one here, we're triggering a wage increase on three other ones. Does that make sense? And that's my problem with this.
Makes sense, you know. It's the same, you know, we haven't, we upgraded wages all that often.
Yep, and that's.
Basically, a lot of times, we just rely on cost of living.
But.
But, yeah.
Right, but so does everybody else with warehouse system. We're all living with cost of living raises, so basically, it's like when you handed me that budget that day. And not to pick on you, but you're the only line item in here by yourself. You were instead of, we were figuring a four percent increase, which we still don't know we're doing.
Right.
Yours came out to nine point one five and the other R N, or the other nurses all combined, came out to seven point four two. I have to explain to the other people in the county why they're getting a four and you're getting a seven to nine. Does that make sense?
Yes, but it, it was all equal, like it was with the other R Ns, it was the two dollar, we all got the two dollars.
Yes, you're all getting the same amount, you're getting two thousand eighty hours times two dollars, which is forty-one sixty. I gotta take that times three and add it to the bottom number that you're paying this part-timer.
Right.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, how that works, yeah.
Yeah, and I get that too, but it's, it's a struggle and extremely hard.
Well, I'm not saying that.
To compete with these other R N wages and in order, in fairness to the R Ns, we have and retain good employees. You have to give a little bit.
Our problem is we're competing with Mercy, we're competing with the union.
The care center up here is the nominal one for Northwood, I have forty-two dollars, forty-five dollars, whatever it was, and it's like, where did that come from all of a sudden? I mean, we've had the hiring bonus up there to fight against too, and. But I'd say they're competing with Mayo more likely, cause I think the unions up there are probably more in that forty to sixty dollar range per hour for Mercy one day. But Mercy's a little, has been a little less, I'm not sure where they're at in Mercy.
You know. You started at twenty-eight, you're getting possible, you're getting our raises each year.
Plus, yeah, you're plus.
And now we're jumping in there with an extra bump in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah. There should probably be a split the difference type of deal.
But you're, and you're board, and you guys on the board approved this in December to do this.
Yep.
Which affects our bottom line.
Yes, it does.
And other departments don't do bumps in the middle anywhere.
No, and that's, remember I talked to you about budgeting, I said, you can't do a bump in the middle of the stream here on a fiscal year, but.
If we have it in the budget.
Well.
Because we do, because we have a P and R N since September.
But then you gotta work that into a new budget coming forward too, and that's kinda where the hiring goes, but.
This year twenty-five. That's all in there.
And that's why those things went up as high as they did.
Right.
See, and that's what I gotta explain when some other county of employee comes to me and goes, what's going on here?
Yep.
Cause if we could pay more, we'd get better employees too.
Oh, so.
And that's.
I see the dilemma there, you got a problem.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, don't wanna have to do it, but we can't find employees at all, R Ns, nurses for thirty.
I had trouble too. And I said.
Yeah. Where, where I said bottom line, give us a bottom line, let us figure it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Give, give me one percent, no percent, whatever you're gonna give me and let me figure it out in my line.
Yep.
We need to get to that.
We need to get to that.
Some are another ones, they figure out what they're doing downstate too, it really helps. We heard stuff this past week that we didn't realize.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um.
They keep changing, why don't, keep changing if they keep telling you more.
Still a question to hand is. Do we allow her to move forward with pursuing this part-time nurse?
Yeah, and that does, I mean, I, I think that's what we need to do. And, and actually, I mean, I guess. It still has to come from approval of help board too, but.
Because bottom line.
Bottom line would be, we would basically be looking at an extra, sorry to interrupt, an extra budget of really just saying, okay, this is what you're gonna get for that budget. Even though you might still have room in there to hire or give wages, that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, just cause that cushion is there. Cause if that's there, next year, we're gonna take a look at it and say, we're gonna yank that cushion out of it.
But this is gonna go on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which you've already got room for, because you haven't had a nurse to play some.
Right.
But you've also got it built into next year's budget, so if, if this girl quits in six months or seven months. And you gotta go to thirty-five dollars, are we gonna trigger again?
So truthfully.
And you probably have a full-time built in.
Truthfully, yeah. Truthfully, what Jesse, Jesse should do with her budget now, is reduce that line item on nurses to part-time nurse, so she should take up the difference. Okay?
Maybe, yeah, maybe, because there's, there's no benefits, which, you know, when you start throwing in health insurance, you're already looking at twelve, thirteen dollars in a year.
And here's. And here's where the hiring deal come into play is all of a sudden, we get back to, we ever get back to normal, where you can hire people and the clients come in, cause I know for fact. Mercy's short clients right now too, they're just, the hospital's not pushing them out to. Apparently, they're not having the issues where they need home care at all or public health right now as much as they did during the pandemic or before the pandemic, but. This is where the discussion would come in, all of a sudden, you're seeing a huge rise in demand for your services, we could discuss that and work it into the next year's budget.
Yeah, this is catch point two.
Or.
You guys are up against the wall trying to hire R Ns, cause you can't get them at the price you're paying. We're sitting here trying to explain it in the budget. It's a hard place in Iraq.
I just love the yet, us having to go back and revise our upcoming budget some more.
I would, I mean, you haven't, it's not approved yet, we haven't, we haven't approved it in the board yet either, so I would, like I say, take that. Full-time position out, make it a half-time position and put those dollars in there. And then that's where we're.
That would reduce bike and diapers and the auto health insurance.
Well, you know.
And then take the other ones back before instead of this, so if it comes up again next year, we're not down in the same road. Because basically, right now, we're just giving you hard blanch on this thing.
Well, I guess the motion basically be, we would, we would agree to approve a part-time nurse in the budget.
And then trigger those other three to thirty dollars.
Well, they're over thirty dollars right now.
Yeah.
But I mean, the two dollar difference.
You wanna trigger that or not trigger it?
Well, I don't wanna trigger it, but you guys are saying we need to trigger it. Okay, if you get a part-timer, are you gonna trigger the other three R Ns for a two dollar an hour raise at the same time?
You're taking all the benefits side out of it, so.
Well, that's just in our December meeting was approved to do that, to trigger those other R N wages. In order to.
Subject, subject to hiring a full-time employee.
Yeah, that was full.
So this is not a full-time.
This is not a full-time, we're not comparing apples to apples here.
Yes, technically, that would not trigger that.
I have no problem with a part-timer at thirty bucks an hour.
Right.
What I have a problem with is triggering them other three.
Yeah.
Because we're comparing full and part, and sometimes you gotta pay more for a part, cause they don't get all the benefits. There's a lot of benefits involved with vacation. And again. Health insurance, all of that stuff.
We're just approving bottom line when it comes down to it, but. We could still have that final say of what we were gonna give them, so I mean, my, just like I say, reduce that to halftime. Probably take that two dollar an hour trigger out of there and just go with. Whatever we end up with. At the county level, I, I, you know, the cost of living. That's the way I would look at it, Jesse. And again, we need to discuss it at the board.
Yep.
But we'll still have that bottom line figure, if it's four thousand dollars, we can say, no, we can't give you more than whatever, we're gonna take that, we could take that four thousand off. If we decided to. Right?
I'm, I'm, yeah. I, I like twenty-four. Reduce it to twenty-four, not halftime, but twenty-four hours.
Okay.
You know, let's hire somebody that way, and take that four dollar or that two dollar an hour trigger. Which is four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars out of the other three. Because you're not comparing apples to apples, those people are full-time, this is a part-timer. But down the road, if you end up hiring another full-timer or something like that. Then we're right back to that trigger kicking in, because you're probably not gonna find somebody for twenty-eight.
No.
Which you haven't.
No, no, yeah, because of your more. Well.
My motion. Is to approve. A R N at twenty-four hours a week on a part-time basis. That doesn't trigger the two dollar difference for the other three R Ns.
Correct, okay, I will second that.
Yeah.
So, clear as mud to you?
Yeah.
And we all, at least.
Are you all on? Well, basically, for this year, you're probably good, it's next year, you're gonna have to look.
Right, it's not affecting you.
You're gonna hire somebody and it's on last year's budget and you've got money left over, cause you haven't had an R N.
This has given us a little more bottom line on that next year's budget without stepping here for three hours trying to pick your budget apart, trying to get you to pull money.
And then I also think down the road, this is not part of the motion, that we need to look at raising. Yeah, I mean, we're just completely out of the ballpark. Twenty-eight, thirty bucks, we gotta do something different.
We need to look at that county wise, we need to figure that out, but we need to figure out this budget stuff before we can even do that, so.
Yeah, we gotta motion a second on the floor. That's all discussion. All in favor, I.
I.
I, I, opposed? Alright.
Thank you guys.
Carry. Okay. Water system improvements, um. Jason is really hoping to have a permit. Maybe this week, he got a good portion of it was approved last week and. Uh, can't remember what the other portion was, like the, is hopefully, so he's hoping that's the maybe a, uh, the rest of the approval this week. Which then they can be ready to go up for bids, so. Hopefully, we'll hear something here in the next week, ten days, so. Uh, when we're back, go. Um. Melissa wouldn't be on this morning, she's working on, uh, development agreement. With, uh.
Lawyer.
Yep, lawyer, attorney to make sure we get that, we got kind of the cookie cutter for. The rest of the development out there, so.
Plus one screen.
Yep. Uh, EMS continued discussion.
When I did that.
Yeah. We're having another meeting this week with the South and the West. Yeah, good, uh, more, or the committees, the committee. So I have more info on that for next week. Uh, discussion of possible action on health insurance incentive. Uh, we've kind of been talking about this, we need to hit that five percent. So I mean, we need to get more participation. That five percent, that.
Five and streaming a little bit.
That, that, yeah, the five percent, we need to get more participation in our wellness programs, we can get more, uh, reduction in our rates.
I mean, it's a difference between about twenty to forty thousand dollars here on that premium, and that, that's huge.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been fighting this forever.
So we've been having the discussion of. Incentivizing.
Yep.
If we hit, we're probably have to do it two different ways, I think, because. We want definitely incentivize the people to participate, something. And for some reason, we don't hit that five percent, then we don't give the extra, you know what I mean?
Yep.
To start it so much a month, if you do participate. But if we don't hit that five percent, we don't get the extra, you know what I mean, do we, do we do a hundred dollars, fifty if you participate? And if we hit the eighty percent participation to hit our five percent, do we add another fifty to it, something, you know what I mean, we can't. The people that are participating have them.
That would be a way to start, that'd be a way to start it.
Yes, yes.
That you can do that. The other thing I was wondering is, I mean, I, I would appreciate the money and I know I've always wanted it fair for every employee, but. Should it be fifty for? Or so much for a single versus so much for a family?
Yep.
Cause if, if you give. Two hundred bucks to a single, they're gonna get a lot of mon, I mean, it's nice that they get more in an annuity, but is that? Fiscally responsible? I, I don't, cause I, like, like I said, I've always been wanting everybody to be same dollar amount, everything to be fair, but I just, I don't know. If you wanna give all that to offset the family, I, I don't know if that's good. I had read one the other day that was like fifty for a family, or fifty for a single and a hundred and fifty for family, I, I, I don't. Just be. Or if you wanted to just start it off, cause. We've, it's been recommended that we not start it until July or January one, so.
I think we get, we have to.
Right.
I let everybody know this is our plan, this is what we're doing, and this, this year here.
Get it done.
We'll pay for next year.
Right.
You know, so if, if everybody participates, we hit that five percent, then next January first, when our. Uh, insurance renews. This is what we're incentivizing you with, because you participated.
So even if we don't hit the five, will they get some kind of incentive?
Well, that's the thing.
That's what we haven't hit before.
Why do you, no, I mean, because I.
Even for the people that are a part of, and are doing.
Yep. Well.
Cause then, then it's.
Then nobody will ever get the incentive.
Right.
Well, that's what it is, that's what it is right now, right?
That's where I go back to, we, there's no other.
And that's why it's set up now, and that's why we never hit it.
There's no contribution, there's no responsibility to this insurance and the, the, the order of the. Absolutely nothing.
Well, and you are, you are getting incentivized from the company.
Yeah.
If you, if you do your assessment, you do your physical, that's what, two hundred bucks, a hundred and twenty-five.
Well, there was, whatever we have for that, I guess.
Plus then, if there's left over, then we've always taken, split that up by those.
And then if we do the walking step thing.
You can get over. You can get over three hundred bucks if you do.
I don't know whether to incentivize the ones that, the small percentage that do, or you have to get it. The five percent to get anybody to have anything.
I don't think we, we're gonna take away what's already there, I don't know if you can enhance it a little bit or not, but.
No, no, we leave what's there, we just.
Leave what's there, but. And those participation numbers.
I guess that is.
Yeah, they're gonna be there no matter what. But if we don't hit that five percent, we're not getting, we're not saving any.
Well, and we gotta get it out now.
Good point, Mark.
We have to save that extra two percent or three percent that we haven't been doing in order to give the back. Otherwise, we're, we're, we're doing the exact same thing we've always done.
Right, we get twenty, we get twenty thousand in reduction instead of fifty.
But I'm sorry, you know, it's just, it's, it's everybody's responsibility in this outfit to talk to their coworkers and encourage them to participate. It's not just participating, or the wellness committee.
They're getting that money from the company or whatever, that's, I mean, but they're gonna, they're gonna participate in our.
There's two, three hundred dollars playing there right now, it's.
And not only is a physical free, you get a hundred bucks to do.
Exactly.
So it's kind of. Yeah.
You're getting paid to do your online assessment.
I mean, let them do this.
We've been preaching this.
Let them do their assessment at work.
We preach and preaching ours and.
But if the county doesn't get anything, save any money until you hit the five, you can't very well.
Yeah, very well give that away.
And you can, you can talk more about it and decide what you, well, I mean, you gotta know, you kinda gotta know now so that you pass it on, so they know that there's an incentive and they need to get it done. But money-wise, what I have in there now is, I went up the two and a half percent to keep building the fund. And which took it to like a thousand forty-five or whatever, and then I put, I built in two hundred dollars. Thinking that that would cover, earn, yeah, two hundred dollars to cover half a year.
Right.
This is, it's tough, I mean.
I know, I know. It's, and it's sad that you're, you know, the people that are doing it, trying to do it, trying to push others to do it. And they're not getting any assistance, they're, uh, yeah, they're not getting. Their fellow employees to do it.
Sixty percent? I mean, it's not crazy what we need. Okay.
On the assessment.
And what are we at?
Sixty on the physical.
Uh, I'll be, either way, it's definitely super attainable.
Yeah.
We done it on here.
How easy it is.
We got the manager, we got forty percent one year, and then after that, it went boom, right down to like one percent, we got the next year. Yeah, but we've never hit five. They never offered five before, I think four was the maximum.
We got, and we got that one.
Never searched years, they did it. At that, it was like forty thousand, stayed in county that year.
Well, and that's, you don't actually notice that technically, because the. It, it goes along with the increase in premium too.
Oh, absolutely.
But.
Yeah.
But it still could be worse.
It's eighty percent for the physical.
Yeah.
And sixty percent for the online assessment.
Yep.
And that's five points, that gets us five percent.
But in that case, if the eighty percent that makes the number could be the only ones that get the incentive. Not the ones that did not do there, you know, the three percent that did, they won't, they get enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess that maybe that's where we're.
That's maybe.
Sling hairs.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, we've gotta get that five percent. In order to pay anybody any extra. But if we get the eighty percent, say, whatever the actual percentage is, if those people participate, we know the ones that didn't. There's no reason we give them incentive if they didn't participate.
You'd only give it to the.
Sort of calling that a penalty.
Yeah, that's, that's an incentive.
We do right now with that extra money, we divide that up between the ones that participated in that. We've done that for what, the last three years?
Yes.
Yeah.
So. I'm okay with that. But we do have to hit that magic number, whatever that percentage is. In order to get any.
So this is something I know, yeah, obviously they can actually, but is this something that just needs to be a policy change or something added in our?
It needs to be a combination of both of them, right?
I would say at the same time, we, if we're gonna, we then I guess time to decide what the number will be. If these numbers are met, but that, it probably needs to go with our handbook as an actual policy.
All our new employees read your handbook. They know what's in there.
And it's time, we're gonna go through the handbook anyways, it's time to do that again.
Time to look at it.
But I just need a number for now.
Right, right.
I think I'm probably safe for.
I think you leave that there, you'll be plenty safe. As long as we can make it work.
But then general supplemental is gonna have to go up.
And I think we found out last week, that's okay.
Our meeting we had last week, I think we got back in from that representative to push those people in my department.
Sure.
So.
Yes, I'd say, I I will, I mean.
And it's gotta be harder with the people that don't have computers, all of your people have access to computers.
How we're, how we've been doing it, yeah.
I think Mike's kinda gonna take the lead on that.
You know, I've heard from people that some department heads don't allow them to do that during look time, which that's wrong. But it doesn't take that long.
Absolutely, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, I just did mine this weekend.
Yeah, so I mean.
Well, I said, I need help, but I'm gonna get it. So, so I mean, I think as long as everybody knows, we're having this conversation, we continue to have this conversation, it's, it's gonna be out, something's gonna be there. But we've gotta get through this, through October thirty-first, this needs to get done. And then once our renewal hits January first, that's when the incentive would start to pay out if we catch that five percent.
And that's why we gotta figure it out within, like by the end of maybe March, so that they have the rest of the time.
Yes.
Till October to be able to get a.
Well, that's the thing is, it's, it's gonna be something, I think we're all in agreeance of that, based on the five percent.
Yep.
So, schedule your physical, if you're gonna participate, schedule your physicals, be ready to roll.
I had employee meetings last week and I brought it up at them meeting saying there's gonna be something just to give them that heads up already. What the numbers is, we don't know yet.
And that's the thing, we need, we need department heads to sell it.
Yeah, cause you're not just getting that incentive, you're already getting a hundred and a quarter.
Plus you're getting a free physical, you're getting, you're getting those, yeah, it's the same thing we've preached for a long.
And they might find something.
Yeah, just it blows your mind, they don't.
Preventative?
Preventative, that's why.
Yeah.
They're only trying to keep you alive.
Yeah, trying to keep you healthy.
Okay, well, we'll uh, have a little more discussion on this, and see where our budgets come to, but. Maybe we have to, we get brought up again sometime here soon. Uh, discussion in action, uh, client energy is rate increases, so. We did submit a resolution from Mason City by uh, Cerro County. Question I have, I think, is on that, are those numbers accurate for working?
No.
I I didn't either.
I doubt that. So that's why I was, anybody did.
And not many.
I don't really think we have to have all those numbers in there.
And not many, I've seen many county resolutions, yeah, so.
Winnebago signed one last week, so we get all of theirs.
Yeah. And Mason City or Cerro did as well, but I think their number, that's what maybe asked is because they're, that actually, like their numbers were changed from that. And if it doesn't say that we have to put all those numbers, then we can just say we're, we don't support.
We're backing it, we're supporting.
We're, we, yeah, so maybe we should.
We don't have to do all those numbers in there, we're just, we're just sending a message that we also agree that the rates are.
Yeah.
Going kinda high.
We should maybe reach out to Winnebago and see.
Yeah, see what they did.
Because that would be more of our comparison of county and.
And I'd be more comfortable with Jeff reading something than so weighing. I mean, I mean, we can use another county because they already, yeah, I know.
But if we get one from Winnebago and uh, just look at over and. Yeah, well, like I said, it'll be two weeks, so. Alright, so, yeah, let's reach out and see if we find Winnebago, we'll bring that up again maybe two weeks. Let's send an email this week, people service, you see them?
Yes. Auger? Is that what it was?
It's part of that thing, yeah.
We'll have to rename the wastewater treatment plant for many.
Well, I mean, was, were things being maintained?
That's, well, that would be the key.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I got that.
Being watched better.
Hopefully, um, people service, you saw that, you see an email?
Yes.
Another, well, we don't know what it is, it's just getting fixed, then figure out, figure out when they get the bill. But I'll be honest with you, I'm getting real tired of this, where the hell is their responsibility at?
Preventive maintenance.
I don't care if, if they can't point fingers at any employee because they're still the company, they're still responsible. And that's what's upsetting to me is we keep getting the bill and bill and bill. A lot of it seems to be preventative maintenance that could have been done. Yeah, but tired of paying them.
Well, that's getting it all at once when maybe it should have been spread over a certain amount of years or something.
Yeah.
I I I don't know how to run a plant, you you know more about it than anybody, and there's certain things you can pull once in a while and fix, don't you?
Yes, it's, it's a bad environment, it's, it's something, those parts where it's like anything else that are getting to that age, but.
And it's slopping forever.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they have known that and taken care of it a long time ago?
Well, and and another thing too is when you talk with Heath, who's the regional manager here, and that there you are. You know, through him and Steve down there, at their corporate offices, we never saw them unless we asked for them to come up there. They should have been up up here checking on their employees more often, they should have been finding this stuff out way ahead of time. We know there's gonna be annual maintenance on this thing just to keep it running.
Exactly.
But now all of a sudden, because of lack of that, nobody wanted to take responsibility, we're getting big bills, and I'm, I am honestly tired of.
Cause why, why isn't somebody higher up going through like quarterly or annually even?
Should be, and all their paperwork they send to you, everything's, they take pride in having this and doing that and.
They know, they run enough plants, they know after so many hours, there's so many time that these things need to be serviced, whether.
Exactly.
Running a motor through the motor shop or changing impellers or seals, I mean, that stuff is, that's gotta be yearly maintenance stuff, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's some stuff that you keep an eye on, when you, when you pull pumps every year, and that's how you find out if you have seals failing or if you have other things. It's, it's not like any piece of equipment you got, there's certain things you do with it, that's a little harder than other things, you know, that you gotta check this more often. Well, you gotta check that, it's the same thing, same principle. So, I don't know. What to do, where to start the conversation, or how to go about it, but.
Cause this one here wasn't on that original list that he had.
This is a whole new one.
How many more of them are gonna?
And, but. Because of the harsh environment, if you read that in the email, because of the harsh environment, well, but was it a little more harsh environment because the air handler was messed up?
Right.
That should have been fixed how long ago? Because that is, it's, it's, you get the uh, you get in that environment with not certain chemicals, but the, the gases that sewer creates. It's very corrosive stuff, that happens, if your air exchanger was working, maybe you would have prolonged this or kept it at a little less harsh environment. How is that our responsibility not to know that thing hasn't been working for two years?
That's why we hurt.
Well, we paid two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for somebody to know that and do that for us. So.
We, so what do you do?
I don't know.
I don't know what to do here.
I mean, no doubt, it has to be fixed.
Send him an email back, so do what you gotta do, but we ain't paying for it.
Well, that's basically what this thing says.
You don't want me to start that conversation, then see who shows up in this room?
Yep.
Cause I'll do it.
I don't think it would hurt.
Not happy about this guy.
Well, it's nice that it's finally all getting looked over.
Absolutely.
He said.
Water off and get pricing at that.
Could they do them two thousand dollars a year instead of hours?
Through thirty thousand last week, you know, I'm all on the bet, this is gonna be, nothing's, nothing's.
I'm not, this he gave us, there's stuff out there that's gotta get done too.
No.
Some of it can be, we can hold off on, but there's other stuff there, pretty pertinent.
And it's time to get some work done, but it could have been.
Could have been doing something.
You know, this, you know, and do like a five-year plan of, we're gonna start picking apart, picking this play.
And what other things, losing money for the last eighteen months, wastewater treatment plan, we just keep tacking on it.
Well, we technically don't do that with the courthouse either, though.
That's on all of us and everybody before us too.
This is more mechanical, this is more mechanical.
Yeah.
You know.
If, if we have to be the responsible ones out there.
You've just been given cans and been kicked a long time.
Well, I guess in the night, they're playing next time, maybe that'll get them attention.
Well, and maybe you just need to start talking to them about the, why, why is all this coming up at once?
Well, that's what I asked, you know, when you, when Heath was in here two weeks ago, whatever, at what point is people's service responsible for it? So, I'll send an email back, these guys responded, that's it.
And they need to go higher up?
Heath is, Heath that was in here, and the new guy, the bearded guy, uh, I can't remember his name, but Heath is the man, they're higher up as the president of the company.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've had.
Cause he's the one we get the, the letter for the increase every year.
Jam, my jam.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'll respond to this email and just let them know we're not happy, and we'll see if it gets, maybe. If not, we can just worry about that next bill that they send us soon. Alright, uh, budget updates, discussion.
We can talk about that tomorrow.
I'll tell you later.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds good, department heads, anything, anyone?
Uh, Monday is a holiday.
Today?
No.
Weekend today. Um, and so we're gonna do the cut over on email, uh, for that day. Um, so come Tuesday, uh, we can be on Outlook. Um, so we'll be sending out communication on it, um.
We'll pay attention to what you're sending out.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not a joke, this is real, it's not hard, it's not a test.
Um, so I'll be working on getting all that stuff finalized as far as mail routing and stuff, so. Um, I'll be, I'm gonna be sending out trainings this week, uh, videos, uh, how to use the different applications and stuff. Um, so. Hopefully people will have a fairly good idea of how things are supposed to work. Um, so that's. Could be a big thing this week on, um, I will be gone Wednesday. So, be out of town.
So, our meeting is Tuesday next week, is what we're saying?
Yes.
All the neighbors, President's Day on Monday?
Yeah.
It's on the door.
That's right.
Oh, sorry.
I worry about get through the door.
Along with the move to Office six sixty-five, um, I'm developing a, what they call a hub site. So it'll be like an internet site for the county employees, uh, on there, I'll have, uh, training stuff. Um, I'm planning to get a page for wellness, so. Right now, where do you go to find out, okay, I wanna take the survey, how do I do that, or I don't even know what I need to do, so we can lay things out on a webpage. People can click the link, take the survey, they can do different things, uh, so I'll give, uh, the wellness team. You know, permissions to change, update that page and stuff like that, um, I'll, you know, it'd be a good place to start putting policies and. Play handbooks and stuff, so people have a simple place to go and look and find things. Yeah, so that's, uh, that's team development right now, it's, uh, I'll send links, uh. So through the day, people should be able to log in and see the homepage for our county internet. And the trains that I have will be out there, so people can watch them there, and then we'll get other. Things will stop there, we go along, that's really good communication tool. For getting things, the, the wellness thing would be great to have out there because people could look and see, oh, these are the people who are already doing it. Wait, my name's not on there, I gotta get on there, or something like that, you know, I don't know.
Hopefully, like, hopefully helps, just the, the end of access.
Right.
I don't know if you can publicly shame.
Well, it's not public. Yeah, I would, I would put it to those that are. Well, there you go, whatever you do, but you can, you can say this department has, you know, however many. Um, so, but yeah, it'll be a, a good communication tool for us, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Department heads?
AJ, have you been giving the emails to the, the first ever skin and?
Yeah, I pushed that.
I don't have their contact information.
Yeah, I pushed that on and I pushed that, uh, questionnaire onto them and said.
Yeah.
Let's just send it back to you, so then you will have.
Good.
Communication for those days, let's just send it back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Matt Duvey put together that zoning letter, and then Jackie went in and tweaked it, and then Jeff Gorbel tweaked it. And the last email I got, you said it looked pretty, all that, everybody looked pretty good.
There was too much.
Yep.
I think you'd lose people.
Simplicity is.
So I.
So the last one, after Jeff got done, yeah, you liked that one. How are we gonna send those out again?
Uh, that's, that was my question, cause it, it's not gonna go out with the tax one, I thought it was gonna go out with an assessor.
Well, but you said you can't, they don't want you adding something to the assessor one, that's.
No, 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 they don't want me adding to the tax.
The tax one, okay, I knew it was one of them.
That, that was said in a, in a training.
I did with, uh. Neapolitan Labs, they're working on, yeah, he said he, that you hit him up at a conference.
Down there Thursday.
Yeah, well, I had talked to him before, and he's like, oh, he says. Your, your, uh, your supervisor hit me up, he says, I'm sorry, I, I didn't get back to you on that one, so, um, yeah. Um, but he's, he's getting a proposal together for us, so.
Yep, he went back and looked and you, I don't think you hardly got through this meeting last Monday, you sent him an email, so.
I, I sent him again, yeah, yeah, I had, I had sent him one earlier, I think asked about it too, so.
Oh, so when, who could we, or, when can we send that out then? That is my. Without paying, without. Without us. Separate.
Those.
Number one, you get it on the website.
Yeah.
That'd be the first, you know, formal thing to do.
Well, yeah, if we'd like Neapolitan's proposal.
Yeah, he means the letter.
Well, that too, yeah.
We can get that out on the website.
I don't know. Sort of do a mass mailing, which.
And can we shrink it down to postcard form, because postcards are. Price, you know what I mean, take that down, even if it's front and back, well, you can't do that.
Can't do that, yeah.
Address.
All that.
But let's think, um, we gotta figure out how to get it out. Thought maybe you have a good idea, after all your years of experience, you probably.
Why could results point, look it up, people.
That's true, we get, sorry, we could just do generic on a postcard, just to give guidance to the internet or.
Whatever, but, you know, I don't think you have to mail them the full ordinance or the full, you know, so.
Oh, no, we're just. We would just send.
Apply if you fail to follow, so look it up.
Sorry. If you're in, you're gonna do a contact, you put mats on this, because not everybody uses.
Right.
Website, what has his info on there?
See, even on that letter, it's got the website on there to go.
Yeah, call before you dig, and you got permit before you dig.
That's right. Alright, let's take.
A lot of people ought to use that, I'll tell you, you're right, can you make a, yeah, you can make a Q R code.
Supervisor weekly.
You know, uh, I went to the state supervisors meeting on Thursday and got a curve ball.
We all got a curve.
We all got a curve ball. Yeah, because we had this kinda figured out at the three point, the four and a quarter that we're at, going to three point five. And we knew that we had to come down because of our property valuations by three percent, so we had it figured out at four point one two. Then we find out when we're down there that, cause he had talked about going lower than that, and so had I. We can't go lower than four point two, we got to hit four point two right on the nose, and if you can't come up with enough in general basic. You gotta steal from your general supplemental and stick it back in there. It's kinda like a shell game, we're gonna bounce it in this year, and next year we have the opportunity to bounce it back out again.
But it doesn't make sense.
That's exactly what they said though, didn't they?
Yeah.
We all.
So that's our curve ball, so if you.
That's our curve balls, if you. We gotta hit four point one two period, that's what you got.
Yeah, that's what I put in.
Right, that's what, cause you did the, you did the calculations, and that's what it came out. In other words, we were thinking maybe we cheat it down a little bit, so it wouldn't be so bad in year two, three and on down the road, you can't do that. You're stuck at four point one two, if you don't have enough expenses to get to four point one two on the general basic.
Oh, we're.
You gotta, oh, anyway, for future, for future reference, you gotta steal, you could, you can steal on your supplement and stick it in there to go to four point one two.
No, we, we will be.
So we'll be fine.
We might have to cut some stuff to get to where we need to be, but it.
Because the curve for us was, we don't get to go, we can't cheat it down a little bit each year.
Hold everything over to general supplemental, uh, uh, a lot of stuff.
Well, what happened, we wanted to go to four. And we wanna go four, we can't. At one, we now are below our max, we have to cut general supplemental.
Right.
So if we go lower than our max, they, they step down until we hit three and a half, then we can re-gauge.
And here's, here's the part of this.
Yeah, you always have to be at the max to be able to use general supplemental, I knew that.
And here was the great part, they realized down in legislature that there's counties that can't get to three point five in four years, so there's more legislature coming.
It's, it's gonna be.
And then.
Legislation.
Sliders might change, and the wind might go a different direction, and then it might change again.
And then I talked to the guy while I was talking to Heidi down there, and they were at three point five and had over six, so they ended up at three, four, three. And then, there was a bunch of guys standing there from other counties along with me, cause I thought it was this way, I said, you can't go back to three point five, and he goes, what? You're stuck at three, four, three.
Forever.
And I said, that's not very fair for you.
Yeah.
Next year.
And if it goes next year, they're going down lower.
But then in twenty-nine, they can go back to three point five. But then in twenty nine, they can go back to three point five.
No.
If things don't change.
Maybe. Maybe.
That's the only thing he did say.
Yeah.
Even though there's more legislature coming, in twenty nine, you're going to three point five, no matter how we get you there.
Not that's ever definite.
They never said it would be good legislation, because more legislation.
I hope they actually talk to counties.
No, no.
That's.
Yeah, they'll have another meeting for you that we can attend and.
Until after they pass.
Let's see, oh.
Go to spring school, because I'm too nervous about all getting all this stuff done.
Quite what?
Want.
Or at least zoom in and whatever they allow you to do.
They also were discussing the comp board. And if they get rid of the comp board, the what's in the legislature right now, they would lock in a three percent quota for everybody across the whole state.
Well, then, not finding people that wanna do it anymore.
And then that would affect every department but the sheriff's department.
And if we we could give more, if we decide to, but that doesn't take effect until after your term is up. So if we gave more to auditor treasury quarter, that won't take effect till after the next election. It's.
It's just boiling down, dude, nobody's gonna wanna be an auditor.
Nobody's gonna wanna do anything.
Oh, who wants to be a supervisor?
No, I I already know I don't wanna do that.
Yeah. They make movies, nightmare from where?
Um we're gonna have, I think it's thirty new auditors, around thirty new auditors that um are doing their first general this year.
Well, that's gotta be.
Wow, no, but that's.
And then we had a certain. My.
Time.
HHS Director Garcia. I'll let you take on that one.
Oh, gosh, what else?
It's a mess. Well, they're changing this entire system. Um. What's gonna happen is it's gonna split our district, yeah, I don't know, it's gonna split our district. Um, you know, and a lot of concern, I know it's everybody's. Was. We're fine, we're just leaving this system you changed two years ago, figured out. Leave us alone, but there's issues in southeastern Iowa with these services or whatever with these services, well, there's and there's twenty four million dollars extra city even fund right now. And that will go to Polk County if nobody else gets their hand in it, but why don't they go to southeastern Iowa and focus on them, help them out, leave others alone. Leave the others alone that are doing okay and providing the services that you demand and made all the changes. But they're not, they're still gonna, and it sounds like it's a bottom down deal, other than it's gonna be a suck.
What happens if we go to a region, you say, no, we're not changing? What if we go back to what we when we have?
We may not get funds, I suppose.
We can't get funds, cause they won't let us levy.
Do we need them, we, well, that's right, we can't levy, but.
Right.
Could we?
We don't levy for mental health.
No, and they won't let you levy for mental health. That's all quick, cause they took it over on sales.
You're right, otherwise I'm gonna say let's just avoid that.
They they've got the control, they've got one hundred percent control, what's gonna happen is, so now we go to advisory board, just like did the second judicial district. And so we're gonna be, you're gonna have now elected officials that. Are like one third, and actually, we're just an advisory board. And so now, your elected officials no longer are part of what's good for your. People in the county, you're you're gonna get more providers, and eventually it's gonna be probably MCOs taking over.